Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 9, 2019 Village Board of Trustees meeting. Would everyone please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Mayor Luisci.
Present. And tonight we're going to begin our meeting. We have two appointments to make. The first appointment will be the appointment of Constance Kitaki. Kitataki. I told her I was gonna do that. Constance Kitataki to the position of secretary to administer administrator in accordance with the appointment letter dated July 31, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion from members of the board on this appointment? If I may, I would just like to say that Constance is a full-time employee will be a tremendous addition to our staff here in Village Hall. So welcome aboard, Constance. Our second appointment will be appointing Julie Girdon to the library board. We didn't vote on it? Sorry, everyone.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell. In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisci.
I'm in favor.
It's been a long summer.
It's been a long, yeah. Our second appointment tonight will be the appointment of Julie Girdon to the library board to fill the unexpired term of Allison Chilson expiring 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any board members like to comment on this appointment?
Just to thank Allison Chilson for her many years of service.
Yes, and I'd like to wish her well on her retirement as well.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisci.
In favor. And that will move us on to our presentations for this evening. And our first presentation will be from Mr. Phil Pepe, who so generously donated a barber pole, which is now on display here in Village Hall. And rather than steal his thunder, I will turn the floor over to Mr. Pepe.
I don't have much thunder, but I did have a barber pole. Tonight's a night to say thanks to all of you, Mayor, today, for me and for so welcoming.
One second, I think the mics, we gotta put the mic.
Is that better?
Ah, there you go.
Now I have a little thunder.
Yes, now you got thunder.
This barber pole has been my living room lamp for 51 years. Before that, it was in front of the Oriole Barber Shop, number 12 Columbus Avenue, from 1932, '33 on. And the Toccoo History Committee has some wonderful photos of it, of the barber's wife with their daughter, 1938. We know that because there's a movie poster in the window down in the corner. And if you open the picture a little bit, you can see Betty Grable and Merle Oberon, two movies. I can't remember the names, but I Googled them, 1938, playing in Bronxville. So I was downsizing. I've had this barber pole. I wanted to find the right home for it. I had hoped to find a place somewhere in Toccoo. It began its life here. It should finish its life here. I did a smart thing. I called Sheila Marcot, who makes things happen, a longtime friend and former Sheila, former outstanding county legislator. I explained what I wanted to do. She said, "Give me a couple of days." She called me back. She said, "The mayor would love to have it, and he's gonna call you tomorrow." And you did. And we talked on the phone. We made a plan. And a couple of weeks later, Joe Tavalila and Silvio came to my place in Yonkers with bubble wrap and plenty of muscle and wrapped up the pole and put it in the back of a DPW truck. Drove it over here by the time I followed with the Globe, because it's so fragile. They already had it standing up and ready to go. So I want to thank them as well. Phil and Alice White, who were glad to have a little bit of Toccoo history added to their wonderful collection. And they have done so much for the village. You know, we're a small village, but with so much history. How did I get this pole? In the late '60s, I bought it in April 1968. In the late '60s, urban renewal was active in Toccoo. People who were there at the time will remember, most of Columbus Avenue, actually all of it, was torn down. People could bid on anything, you know? Plumbers bid on the radiators in the stores. I was a poor teacher. I was making $105 a week. I was living on my own on Oakridge Place, trying to pay for graduate school. I had very little furniture. And my very good friend from junior high school and still today, Mark Russo, who was the building inspector under Mayor Bob D'Agostino, said to me, "You know, you can bid on anything." I said, "I'd like to bid on, could I bid on that barber pole?" He said, "Yeah, go see Rita Basha, the village clerk. She'll tell you the procedure. Bring a check, you know? And if you're the high bid, you get it. And if you're not, you know, you go home." I won it. I outbid the scrap man, Joe Pitt. Remember Joe Pitt? By a dollar. He wanted it for scrap, but the condition was, we had to remove it from the sidewalk and repair the hole. Mark and I go on a Sunday morning with some tools, his station wagon. We pry the thing off the sidewalk. All the gears fall out. They were all rusted. We put it in the back of his station wagon, mixed up some cement, repaired the sidewalk, put a couple of bricks around it, brought it up to my apartment on Oakridge Place, ran a wire through, put in a light bulb, put the Globe on, instant lamp. So it stayed with me all those years. But there comes a point in time where you downsize, and I wanted it to go back home. I couldn't be happier than to have it come back here. I am grateful to all of you. I really am. And I hope that people will remember that it has a history with Toccoo, almost 90 years. And I'd like to think that people coming in to plead their tickets at the court, if they touch the barber pole on the way in, maybe it'll bring them good luck. So tonight's a night to say thank you to all of you, mayor especially. Thank you. Please thank the good fellows in DPW. Phil and Alice, you will be the custodians. Sheila, you were the one that made it all happen. I have a little envelope with a letter for the Toccoo History Committee formally donating the barber pole to them and a check to help them on their way in their digitalizing of our archives. So I'd like to present it to them. Mayor, if you'd like to join me.
Sure, thank you.
Or any of the trustees. I'd be very happy to.
Do you want us to join me?
Phil, one question. What happens if somebody comes in and wants a shave and a haircut?
You see the mayor. You're very welcome. Thank you, mayor. Thank you. Thank you again. You're very welcome. Thank you all. Thank you for the chance to say thank you tonight.
And thank you, Ms. Pepe. You know, in listening to your story, Mr. Pepe, it's for $1, that would have been in the scrapyard, and it would have been a lost piece of history that anything of that nature to me is significant. And to be able to preserve that and to be able to allow the public to see something like that, which, again, in my eyes, is so valuable to the history of Toccoo. And I think what I also would like to share with the residents is that you also generously donated a railroad sign, the Toccoo Railroad Sign, which is well over 100 years old. And that's also on display here in Village Hall. And the Department of Public Works also is in possession of another artifact that you found by the wayside, literally, right? You waited, you waited, you waited. And what did you recover but the original Main Street and Midland Place signs? And those are on display at the DPW on Midland Place. So thank you for your generosity. Thank you for preserving the history of Toccoo. Our next presentation, this is a gentleman who I had the privilege of meeting a few weeks ago. His name is Michael Fosina. He is the president of New York Presbyterian Lawrence Hospital, and he's going to tell us about the first-rate care that is available right here in Bronxville.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and trustees, for inviting me tonight. That is a wonderful presentation. I love history, so it's great that those artifacts remain right back by the village where they belong. Congratulations on that. When the mayor and I talked, it made sense that we come and talk a little bit about what's happening at Lawrence Hospital, so people are aware. I'm a lifelong resident of Norishell and have been, still live there now. So I'm a local Westchester guy. So now to be here in a hospital in Westchester is tremendously exciting for me. I've been at Lawrence for three years, but I've been at New York Presbyterian for my entire career, for close to 30 years. So I thought it made sense for us, me, to step back a minute, tell you a little bit about what's happening with NYPD as a whole, get into what's going on at Lawrence, so you can understand the changes that we've been making to the hospital. New York Presbyterian is a health system of 10 hospitals across the New York metropolitan region. We have three of them here in Westchester, which are Lawrence Hospital, our Hudson Valley Hospital, and our Westchester Division in White Plains, with our two large academic medical centers being Columbia Campus and our Wild Cornell Campus down in the city. Then we have two hospitals, both, one in Brooklyn and one in Queens. Lawrence joined the New York hospital system. Do I have a, how do I change slides? Oh, right there. Luisci, can you help me with that? That's fine. So New York Presbyterian and Lawrence came together in July of 2014. Lawrence has, as you know, been around since 1909. We're the only hospital in Westchester who brings the care to New York, Lower Westchester, brings the care of New York Presbyterian and Columbia doctors to local Westchester. And we've been doing that by adding additional Columbia specialists and offices in Westchester. We have one standard of care that we have been using in all our New York Presbyterian campuses, and we are bringing that to Westchester. So if you come into the hospital, you get admitted, how the nurses treat you, how the doctors treat you, it's the same standard that we're using at our Columbia campus, our Wild Cornell campus, our Lower Manhattan campus, whatever the campus may be. And the goal of the board and our CEO was to bring the care of New York Presbyterian to the local community. How do we make it easier and more convenient for the patient and their family members to get care from New York Presbyterian? And that's what allowed us to venture out into the different communities, and Lawrence being the hospital in Lower Westchester that we've made a relationship with. We've been providing care since 1909. We have a full range of services. We're designated stroke center, our emergency department, and we have 288 licensed beds. It's the third-largest hospital in Westchester. And we're a three-star hospital. We have about 1,400 different employees. So we put disposable income into the local communities. We want to use local vendors. We want to make sure we're hiring local staff, so we can keep the economy of Westchester and our local campuses thriving. The next slide will go through some of the services we have. I wanted to highlight a couple of them here for you. So the cardiac cath lab, we opened up our second cath lab last month. We opened up our cardiac cath lab in 2015 with our partners down at Columbia. So it's the same Columbia interventional cardiologist. It's the same equipment. It's the same nursing protocols that we use at our Columbia campus. And the volume grew so quickly that we had to open up an additional lab. So the Westchester patients realized that they could get care from interventional cardiologists from Columbia locally. And that's what we've been trying to do. And so the program is so successful that we expanded the program. We also recently, in March, expanded the program so we can do interventional stroke care. So that is similar to what was happening in cardiology years ago. 25 years ago, they used to give you medication, break up the clot, then they started doing cardiac caths, they go and get them. We now can do that at Lawrence for strokes. So we have the neurosurgeons from Columbia who provide 24-hour-day care at Lawrence. So if somebody comes into our emergency room with a stroke, we can, with interventional, go in, take the clot out, and pull it out. That's some of the most advanced care that you have, not only at Columbia, but we now have it here locally. So if somebody's having a critical issue, an emergency, a heart attack or a stroke, our emergency room protocols are the same that we use elsewhere. They'll get the patient up into the cath lab, they'll get the patient into the operating room as quickly as possible. The doctors and the surgeons will provide that care and provide good quality care and outcomes. And it's been tremendously successful, both in cardiology and neurosurgery. We've also added orthopedics to our local Westchester. So we have seven Columbia full-time orthopedics here, and you'll see later, I'll show you, we have our new sports performance center that we opened up in Eastchester. But here you could see, we have a variety, different care that we provide at the hospital and in the local community. Next slide. And these are just some of the facilities that we've been upgrading. We opened up our cancer center in November 2016. We have radiation therapy in the basement of the cancer center. It's the first time that Lawrence has had that. On the ground floor of it, we have medical oncologists, surgical oncologists seeing patients there. We have an infusion center. And on the second floor of that, we have eight state-of-the-art operating rooms. We also expanded telemedicine. So we have, New York Presbyterian is one of the largest providers of telemedicine in the country, which means we can get a second opinion consult from our colleagues down at Columbia locally. We have them in our emergency room. If we need a second opinion consult, the emergency room picks up the phone, gets them on the screen, and they can evaluate the patient right there in our emergency room. The cath lab, we talked about in the sports performance center, we talked about on White Plains Road. And this is, the next slide just shows you what goes on inside the sports performance center. We can, our orthopedic patients there. We do physical therapy there. And then we have an arrangement with a sports performance company to train athletes, young athletes, adult athletes, college athletes, so they can come in there and get trained and have some of the most state-of-the-art equipment. In that treadmill right there is an anti-gravity treadmill that they're working on with that particular person there. So you get there, it takes the weight off of your hips and ankles while they work you out and then try and get you back into rehab services. So there's some things there that not others have, and we're excited that we have the opportunity to bring the resources to our local community. And that's because we're part of the New York Presbyterian healthcare system. The investment in Lawrence, the investment in Lower Westchester has been tremendous. Next slide. This is our service area we cover. You see, we cover Lower Westchester as well as some parts of the Bronx that we cover. But we're seeing more and more patients come from other areas because they're understanding the type of care and the changes that we've made to the organization. These are where our physician practices are. So we have a variety of different practices in and around the community. We keep looking to expand based on the demands of the community and the type of services that we need. So we're always looking and understanding what's going on in the community and expanding offices in those locations. We like to do community outreach. I think it's important for the hospital to be a partner with the community, so it's either an example of some of the events that we have done in the community. And I'm interested in working with Tocco and seeing what else we can do to help you, whether it's school fairs, whether it's health fairs, whether it's different type of events, what is important to you and to your residents. But it's important that the hospital be a trusted partner in the community, and that's what we want to do. So we have an opportunity for us to partner together and do a lot of things, which I think will be exciting for the residents of Toccoo. And I'll stop there and see if there are any questions that people have for me.
This is a subject that's dear to my heart. Do you have a pediatric oncology ward there as well in Lawrence?
We have a, yes, we have a pediatric, inpatient pediatric unit. It's not specifically dedicated to pediatric oncology, but we have pediatric beds there and we have pediatricians who cover us there. We have pediatricians, attending pediatricians onsite 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Great, thank you.
I just had one question about the telemedicine. So you only use it for hospital-to-hospital? It's not used in the community at all? So there's no opportunity for community members? So there are other hospitals that I know of that people can call in from home?
Yeah, no, there are. There's definitely opportunities for us to do that. We actually have an NYPD on demand, so you can go on your phone and download the NYPD Demand app and get one of our emergency room doctors and FaceTime them. And then make a decision as to whether or not you should go to an emergency room or not. It's never great when people go into the emergency room and it gets overwhelmed, but this gives you a doctor in real time that you can get access to.
And this is covered by different insurance, is correct?
Yes. Obviously, depending upon the insurance carrier or what the policy is, but yes, it is covered.
And how many beds at Lawrence?
There's 288 certified beds. We're running probably around 220 right now.
Okay.
Excellent. Anyone else?
My father had to receive services at Lawrence last year before he passed away, and I have to say, he got excellent care. So thank you, guys.
Well, thank you very much. We've done a tremendous amount of changes and improvements over the past three years. We're excited about it. We're not where we want to be. We continue to move forward. We continue to expand subspecialists in and around the community. We continue to align ourselves with our New York Presbyterian campuses, so it's the same care across the board.
It's really certainly reassuring to know that we have this high-quality standard of medicine right here in our community. It's good to hear that, Michael.
Thank you very much. That is the goal, how do we keep people in their community? It's easier, it's easier for the family members, it's easier for the patient. The doctors will decide if you have to go down to Columbia. They understand what we have here, what we're doing, and they'll make a decision, oh, we'll do that here, or we do that Columbia. From our perspective, we want to put the patient in the right location at the right time for the care that they need, and the clinicians are real great at that.
And I think it's something that you and I discussed, is the same equipment that's used in Manhattan and all those, what everyone believes to be, you know, top-rated hospitals is also here in Lawrence.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we were doing, is aligning all of our equipment. So when the doc who works sometimes at Columbia and comes up here, it's the same equipment. They know how to use it. It's a standard that we've decided across the board at NYPD. We take advantage of it, and it's easier for everybody that way.
Excellent.
So thank you for having me. I appreciate it. But I wouldn't want to stop without thanking your chief here for all the work that he's done with us at the hospital and partnering. You know, the police force and the chief have been great as we continue to expand and partner with the community. So I just want to publicly thank John for everything he's done with us over the past couple of years. So thank you very much, and I appreciate you having me here today.
You're welcome. Thank you again, Mr. Fosina.
Thank you.
Okay, our third presentation this evening will be Mayor Phil White.
Thank you very much. My original mission here this evening was to talk about a former mayor that I served under. And I don't think he's gotten enough credit for what he's done for the village of Toccoo. So if you'll allow me a few minutes, I'd like to talk about him. I served him as a member of the planning board and then trustee and eventually succeeded him. Bob was born during the Great Big Depression. He lived up in Hillside Place. Everything was going fairly well for them until the tragic death of his father at an early age. His mother raised him, supported the family and sisters. And he never forgot his mother, right up until her 100th year, he took good care of her. He attended Eastchester High School, and there was a teacher there that was his mentor. I don't know many people could remember him, but his name was David Oppenheim. And David, at the time of mentoring to Bobby D'Agostino, was also studying for his law degree and eventually took over his uncle's practice, who was Judge Strainer. And he went on to be a corporate lawyer. And he, in some ways, was emulated by Bob D'Agostino later on in life. Bob attended the Merchant Marine Academy over at Kings Point and graduated some, four years later, with commendation for his good work. In 1956, that was, and he met his wife, Trudy, who was a great partner for us. She had a great sense of humor, and my wife and I enjoyed attending fairs with them. Now, the main reason, or the main part of this speech has to do with what he did for the village of Toccoo. Shortly getting into office, he heard the bad news, and that was that U.S. Vitamin was leaving the village of Toccoo. This is a company with 500 employees and two people that were gonna get their Nobel Prize in science for the work they did here in Toccoo. It was a heartbreaker. But Bob started an organization called SIT, Sit in Toccoo. He wanted to get Burr's Welcome to stay if they could. He talked with the president of the organization. But they were very understanding, and they helped him to get another group to take over where Burr's Welcome was leaving, and that was the U.S. Vitamin, a division of Revlon. Bob became a trustee in 1965, and in 1967, he became mayor. And a big problem, of course, was urban renewal. There's so many crazy, different designs they had. One of them, would you believe, was to block off Columbus Avenue on the Hill Street, turn the traffic on Columbus Avenue up on the Hill, onto Cameron, and then back onto Main Street. Of course, that, the public would never take that. So at the public hearings, that was really knocked out, and it was no reason for a plan like that. The cost for that, urban renewal, for the initial cost, $6 million, the village was responsible for $1 million. And all the while, they're losing assessables with the buildings knocked down. And it was tough even paying the bills, you know, getting the police department paid, the highway department paid. But he managed somehow. And the Urban Renewal Agency was involved in a lot of things: appraisals, relocation, demolition, some other kinds of losses, development plan approval. And some of the things that happened was buildings were being torn down, there were fires. And one ridiculous thing that happened, and a very sad thing too, a lady was about to be relocated. It was going to be over at the new building that was being built for the seniors on Union Place, and she said, "No, I can't go. I have to wait for my husband. If he comes and he doesn't find me, I'll be lost." He had been dead for 20 years. And that's the type of thing you had to deal with. Heartbreaking things. Another thing that happened, and they rip him down the building, and money comes flowing out of the walls. Now, you have to understand that during the Great Depression, half the banks in the country went broke. And here, some poor soul took all his savings and hid it in the wall, and nobody knows who it is, and eventually that was lost to whoever collected it as it was slaying out the walls. The toughest thing to get started was the relocation plan for the majority of the people who were here. Sanford Gardens helped to a minor degree, because they only had maybe one or two vacancies a year. The senior building was a big help. It took a number of seniors, but the main relocation was going to be the building built as Marble Hall. And at that time, the interest rates went into double digits. So it was held back. So finally, towards the end of his term in around 1963, they got the approval for the building, and they start to build the building, and they find out now that the number of pilings that they wanted to put into the building were insufficient because Marble Hall property at one time was river-bottomed. In other words, the river from, the Bronx River, spread all the way across Columbus Avenue, hard to believe now, and covered the area of where Marble Hall was. But finally, he got through all of that. Towards the end, he and I were up on top of the building. I didn't realize he was getting ready to quit, but he was doing a scanning of the entire village of Tuckahoe. He couldn't see the senior building, but he did see Marble Hall going up. We're on the very top floor. And he overlooked the major part of it. The first development was the shopping mall at the corner of Columbus Avenue and Main Street. And even doing that, they found a problem. They couldn't keep a tenant because there was no parking. So they went back to the plans, cut a portion of the resident area, which eventually got to be the Tower Club, and they turned it into a parking lot, and that straightened out the parking. So there were so many things that were done that people have no appreciation for now because he's gone and the years have gone by. And leaving you with two other things that probably were not part of the village's business, but he had a heart for seniors like he did with his mother. And they wanted a little place that they could have as a clubhouse. So he rented a little storefront around the corner from the old village hall, and he gave them a place where they could meet, play cards, socialize, and eventually they moved over when the senior building was built on Union Place. And the last thing I want to mention too, again, and not necessarily village business, but he took these things on to improve the life quality here in the village of Tuckahoe. And that was the daycare center. That had been financed for many years by the county, and then the funds ran out after a certain number of years, and they had not made provisions for additional funding for that particular time. So the village had to come in and help them through a community development block grant. So I want to leave you with that because I feel that he was one of the great mayors that really turned the village around. He turned it into a modern community. It was, you know, like mixed emotions. We used to think about all the little mom-and-pop stores here on Columbus Avenue. Everybody knew everybody. U.S. V rips out a part of the community, and urban renewal, urban renewal another part, and still we got it all together. I say "we." I had no part of it at that time, but he did the part that really put the community back together. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
He truly was a mayor walking down a blank canvas, as we like to say around here. And that's it. Thank you, everyone, for these presentations this evening. So that will take us to our next order of business, which will be our public hearings, and the first one will be considering a proposed local law to allow the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2020, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law, Section 3-C. Do I have a motion to open this hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? If I may, we'll recollect that we had this brought up at our July meeting. Something allows us, it gives the village board a safety net in the event of some sort of emergency that would allow us to exceed the 2% tax cap.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang?
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And that will bring us to the adoption of minutes of, wait a minute, where am I on this here? Yes, okay.
I have to wait, see if the people...
Any discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? Any comments? Being none, I will now make a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang? In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. This is great. All right, now, we're up to this here. Okay, we're going to, okay, with the approval of minutes of the village board meeting of July 15, 2019, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang? In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And this will give the public the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. Okay, being none, then we will now move on to our resolutions, and resolution number one is authorizing a proposed local law to allow the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 1, 2020, that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in general municipal law, Section 3-C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang? In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the donation of a two-hour midweek birthday party at the Tuckahoe Community Center to the Tuckahoe seniors for their raffle at their annual bazaar, which will be held on Saturday, October 5. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang?
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the renaming of Hollywood Avenue to Hollywood Avenue East. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If I may, the reason for this, believe it or not, I mean, and this has been going on for many, many years, there happens to be a Hollywood Avenue located in Yonkers with the exact same zip code. So quite often, there were residents in Tuckahoe who was having their packages delivered to Yonkers and vice versa. So one of the residents up there, Tom Ringwald, petitioned the neighborhood and obtained a sufficient amount of signatures to allow us to change this Hollywood Avenue to East, so now their mail will go to them here in Tuckahoe. It's a great idea. It's just incredible that it took this long, but we got it done. Or Tom got it done, I should say.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang?
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the use of the Lake Avenue parking lot on Saturday, October 5, with a rain date of October 6, for the Growlers Oktoberfest from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. in accordance with rules and regulations by the village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang? In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Okay, resolution number five is authorizing the setting of a public hearing for October 7, 2019, to consider a proposed local law prohibiting the sale of electronic nicotine delivery products in the village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Gary?
Sure, yeah. I understand, the board's rationale for looking at this is obviously health reasons. Last month, the New York State Department of Health came out with a health advisory for unexplained vaping-associated pulmonary illness, and this was sent out to the healthcare facilities, hospitals. And basically, it says this advisory is to inform you of an emerging health threat of severe pulmonary disease associated with use of vape products, and it goes on and tells you, you know, what those are. And the interesting thing about the health advisory is that the treatment, it says at this time, there is no specific treatment for patients presenting with symptoms and findings consistent with vaping-associated pulmonary disease. So that's a problem. So I know Governor Cuomo came out this weekend and commented on it. As we all see in the news that there's a number of these illnesses that are appearing now, and they don't know what it is. It says, so Governor Cuomo said, "There's an investigation ongoing. Nobody knows exactly what it is. There's some suggestion that it's linked to vitamin A, et cetera, but our health guidance is no one should use vaping products, period, until we know what it is." So the governor came out with that statement. Eastchester just passed a local law just recently banning the sale of these products in Eastchester. Our law would be very closely mimicking what they've already done. It should be noted, though, that Town of Bedford passed a law similar, but there were definitely differences up there. What they did, instead of a total ban, they created districts, and you couldn't sell these products in certain districts. The service stations, because they have probably a lot up there, got together and they sued the Town of Bedford, and that lawsuit's now pending in the Supreme Court of Westchester County. They're probably midway through the litigation. It's going to take another year or so probably to get through that, to see if there's, if this local law will hold up, up in Bedford. So basically, there's a problem, a health problem out there. This is a hot topic. There is still litigation going on, but again, Eastchester just passed it, so this is the board to consider this and hear the public on this and see what the board would like to decide to do.
Well, I, my opinion is, this is one of these issues that we need to be very, very proactive on for the, just for the mere fact that we don't know what these effects will be for, whether it's short-term or long-term use. You know, the, we know what cigarettes do, and we know that, how heavily regulated they are, but in the case of these vaping products, these cigarettes, there are no regulations by the government. So a store owner can put up a product sign in their window, unlike, they cannot put a Marlboro sign in their window. That's prohibited. So again, I've said this a few times already, we know there's a fire, so let's not wait for the house to burn down, and I'd much rather see us do something before that house does burn down. And of course, we welcome any comment from the public, and please, by all means, attend next month's meeting, or of course, if anyone's in the audience would like to speak on it tonight, and I will ask any of our board members if they would like to comment on this.
I would like to comment. As a mom of four, ranging from nine years old to 19 years old, I worry about their health and the health of all the kids in our community. Thank you to the Eastchester Police Department, who is responsible for the SRO, School Resource Officer, in the Tuckahoe schools, who will monitor the school district as well as Eastchester District very closely. Tuckahoe Police Department remains available for any emergency and will work closely with the Eastchester Police Department in any event of a problem, and will still be responsible for our DARE program, and I thank them.
I would like to comment too. So we've seen this at Eastchester schools. I live in that side of Tuckahoe, where my daughter goes to Eastchester schools, and these products are really kind of insidious. They're small, the kids can hide them, they can get them at the local gas stations that are right within the distance of the school, so I really do think it's something that we should take, be proactive about. It's very dangerous.
Absolutely.
It's a no-brainer.
Yes, we think.
Yeah, absolutely.
I remember back in May, I attended a symposium at Concordia College. I had some comments back then, and that opened, that night opened my eyes up to how detrimental these products are to the youth of this country. The industry is going to tell the public that this is to help smokers quit smoking, so on and so forth. That is a fallacy. The industry is gearing all of those products towards the young people of our country. The mere fact that there are a multitude of different flavors that an individual can purchase, it's odorless, they can vape in this room, and we wouldn't even know that they had vaped, other than to see that big plume of smoke come out of their mouth. And as Mr. Gertston said, you know, the health effects are now becoming apparent. The CDC's been doing some pretty extensive studies on this. One of the things they're concerned about is that these oils coat the interior of the lungs and, of course, now restrict the lungs to perform properly. And again, it's every day, it's on the news, there was a young man that's vaped for a year and a half and wound up in the hospital in respiratory distress and might be on a CPAC machine for the rest of his life. So it's not something that I think we should, again, I don't see any, as you said, Trustee Andino, it is a no-brainer, so.
And today, the FDA opened an investigation of Juul, the company that's the largest producer of those products, so, for false advertising.
I'm just curious about two things for clarification. Miners can purchase this legally now?
No.
Okay. But you would put the ban in effect just across the board, they won't be available at all, because obviously the miners are still getting them?
That is correct.
And I suppose they also get cigarettes, even though they're not supposed to? I mean, I just don't know what happens. I mean, they're so strict about it these days, and I'm just wondering, miners still sell to miners even though they're not supposed to?
One of the points that was made in this symposium at Concordia College, that all the gains that were made in the anti-smoking campaign has been lost to the vaping industry.
Right, and part of that was they portrayed them as being less harmful.
And the flavors and everything.
And the flavors.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else from the public? Okay, thank you. Resolution number six.
We have to, we'll call an hour.
Oh, sorry.
We're in the public hearing for now.
Right.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang?
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee? In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number six is authorizing a proposal dated May 31, 2019, from Rent to Christmas in the amount of $4,999.64 for the annual Village Winterfest celebration. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang? In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And just so I don't make the same mistake three times in one night, if I just may comment on this, Winterfest this year will be a one-day event as opposed to a two-day event, except the exception will be, the difference being, is that Winterfest will be an all-day, into-the-evening affair, so we're going to begin at 12 o'clock, I believe, John, and then that will run till 8, 9 o'clock, depending when Santa Claus gets tired, and all of those, all of those wonderful activities that we had during those two-days events will be all part of that one-day event here in Depot Square. So I'm really looking forward to that. We're going to have some, something different this year, and I hope everyone likes it, and of course, I hope everyone does show up for this one, which they always do. Resolution number seven is authorizing the submission of an application to the Westchester Library System for a Public Library Construction Program grant for upgrades and improvements to the library in the amount of $187,000, with the village contribution half the amount of said grant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
Trustee Lang? In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And just at this point in time, I would also just like to publicly congratulate Swadeesh. She just secured a substantial grant not too long ago in the amount of $38,000, so doing a great job down there, and what this is doing, of course, is alleviating some of the burden on our expenses here in the village, so, nice job, congratulations, Swadeesh. Nice job, congratulations, Swadish, and once this will come through. Resolution number eight is authorizing a shared service IMA with 10 other Westchester municipalities with the New York State DEC for a shared recycling app. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing the sale of surplus DPW equipment to the following highest bidders through public bidding at Vehicles Auctions International. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to tell you what we sold and what we sold it for. We sold a 1991 International Dump Truck to an individual in Sandy Springs, Maryland for $1,300. We sold our 2003 Ford Explorer to an individual in West Falls, New York for a price of $2,750. And lastly, we had a 2005 John Deere Tractor Mower and Plow that was sold to a maintenance firm out in Ronconcomer, New York for $3,000. So nice work on recycling those, that equipment and getting some money back. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee? In favor.
In favor. Resolution number 10 is authorizing a declaration of an elevator replacement on an emergency basis exempt from bidding procedures to tri-state elevator in the amount of $120,140. An authorization of appropriation of fund balance in the amount of $40,978 to capital account 2018-0109 for said repairs. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee? In favor.
Mayor Luise?
In favor.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor White would like to know when the elevator's going to be done.
Great question. Well, we had, the first delay was getting the money motherboard, which was a six-to-eight-week delay. And then in the ensuing process, I believe we have now refurbished the entire elevator, if I'm not mistaken. And I was going to say, if anyone's been to Village Hall in the last few months, it's, I have to say, it's an embarrassment, because I've seen some people who definitely need to use elevators, and it's also been a tremendous burden on our, the parents and children here that come to Andrus. But something that was really out of our control, hard to believe in this day and age, they would take that long to get a piece of electronic equipment, but that was the reality of it. But we also took that extra step to, we're just going to redo that whole elevator and, and repair it. So it'll be done, I know they're working on it diligently. Every day that I'm here, I see them working, so it's simply a matter of time. The sooner the better, of course, Mr. White, I know. Resolution number 11 is authorizing a declaration of a sewer repair on an emergency basis exempt from bidding procedures by Canzone Contracting Company in the amount of $122,082. An authorization of appropriation of fund balance in the amount of $52,815 to capital account 2018-0113 for said repairs. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second, please?
Second. Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
In favor.
Mayor Luise?
In favor. Resolution number 12 is authorizing a tax sociarity settlement with John Gentile for assessment years 2014 to 2018 with the street address of 36 Midland Avenue, Section 29, Block 4, Lot 23, in the amount of $5,723.11. Do I have a motion? Motion. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee? In favor.
Mayor Luise?
In favor. Resolution number 13 is authorizing a tax sociarity settlement with Verizon, New York, Inc., for assessment years 2017 through 2019 with the street address of 225 Marble Dale Road, Section 39, Block 4, Lot 1 Point D, in the amount of $54,750.65. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee? In favor.
Mayor Luise?
In favor. Resolution number 14 is authorizing the retroactive approval of the Parkview Heights Block party schedule for September 7, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
I'm in favor because it was really fabulous. And thanks to my neighbors for organizing.
Trustee Lee?
In favor.
Mayor Luise?
In favor. Resolution number 15 is authorizing amendments and modifications to the fiscal year ending the 2019 budget. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
In favor.
Mayor Luise?
In favor. Resolution number 16 is authorizing the closing of the following completed capital projects. Number, the first one would be project number 2018-0111 for road resurfacing, and the next one also, 2019-0117. That project also was for road resurfacing. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee? In favor.
Mayor Luise?
In favor. And the last resolution, number 17, is improving vouchers in the amount of $1,353,573.97. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Andino?
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell?
In favor.
Trustee Lee? In favor.
Mayor Luise?
In favor. And that concludes our resolutions for this evening, and we're going to begin a discussion this evening on on-street meter parking on Marble Dale Road. This was part of the revisions to the Marble Dale corridor revision, that we had a public hearing open for quite a substantial amount of time. We closed that public hearing and approved those guidelines at the July meeting, if memory serves me well. And part of that revision of those guidelines involved the on-street meter parking here on Marble Dale Road. And I guess we'll leave that, wait for the chief to come up and, as part of his report, or David?
...of why we wanted to put this on the agenda. First of all, this stemmed from a couple of reasons. One was it wasn't the Marble Dale Road design guidelines, having some recommendations on there. And one of the reasons for it is that we, as we know, that the rezoning of Marble Dale Road about a decade ago, it is general commercial district. One of the things is, we're looking to match the other commercial districts in the village. Another priority is, is that as the changes happen on that road, it's a bit of a hodgepodge now. So there is, when the ice skate ring came in, the planning board made them put some meters in there. Recently, when there was another development, another application down there, the planning board has asked them to put some meters in there. So there's a bit of a hodgepodge down there. So what we were doing is, we're trying to take that kind of out of the, the planning board's purview and say, you know, we need kind of a comprehensive plan of what it looks like down there. The guidelines have said that we should be prioritizing short-term parkers, and we see more commuter parking down there. So we were trying to kind of stem that commuter parking to make sure that there's kind of flow down there. So what we've done is, the police department has looked at what's going on down there right now, and if you go down there, there's two hours, there's four hours, there's nothing. It's, you know, again, a hodgepodge down there, and put a recommendation in of some long-term and short-term parking. Why we wanted to open this up for discussion is, we wanted to kind of make the public aware of that this is what we're looking to do, try to maybe, try to get a little feedback. We understand that some of the owners of some of the businesses down there may not agree with this, but as of right now, the local law, there's already authorization in the village code that allows for meters to go down there. We're just kind of wanting to make sure that everybody's aware of this, and this is something that we're looking to do in the near future.
Thank you, David. And again, it's one of these proposals that when we do, when it is enacted, we could always go back and tweak, re-tweak it.
What we'd want to do is, yeah, re-tweak where some of the short-term and long-term parking is, absolutely. And that's what we're looking for right now, is just, as obviously some of the businesses go in there and some of the uses change in some of those buildings, we can obviously relook at some of those areas.
Thank you. Great. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our department, departmental reports to the board, and we will begin with our Chief of Police, Chief John Costanzo.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Just a couple of announcements. Obviously, we're almost nearly a week into the school season, and the schools being open and school buses out. We just want to make sure that our residents are aware that it's illegal to pass the school bus in either direction. Part of our protocols every single day is for our patrols to follow school buses and make sure that people are paying attention. As our village attorney role knows, that the fines are very stiff for passing a school bus. Our judge is adamant about not taking plea deals on school bus violations, so clearly we didn't want people to get tickets, but more importantly, we want to make sure that our children are safe. So please drive carefully and be aware of the stop school buses and the fact that it is illegal to pass in either direction. I just want to commend and thank one of our local merchants, the owner of Swirl and Joy, Christopher Para. On August 6, in conjunction with National Night Out, the Tuckahoe Police Department had an event, a cop, cone with a cop event, and it was tremendous success. We had a beautiful night. We had nearly 400 people attend, mostly children and their, you know, their parents and siblings. And it was just a great night. Young people interacting with police officers, enjoying an ice cream cone. And it was all made possible really with the generosity of Mr. Para and his staff at Swirl and Joy, as well as the Community Fund, who also helped defer some of the costs. So big, big thank you to Mr. Para, the Community Fund, and for the police officers that attended on their own time. We had a large contingent of officers there, and everyone had a great time. So thank you to all involved. I just want to also make an announcement. I know it's a little late in the game, but this Friday, September 13, at 7:00 PM, we have, the Tuckahoe Police Benevolent Association is having their annual dinner, and this year they're honoring former Mayor Steve Eklund. It, it's going to be a great night, and certainly Mayor Eklund is so deserving of this recognition. So it's not too late to get a ticket. If any of our residents are interested, just call the police desk at 961-4800, and we'll squeeze you in. Should be a great night. So, and that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Frank DiMarco, our Superintendent of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the board. I also want to send my condolences out to Rob DiAgostino. He was a great man, and occasionally he would come down to my office and love sharing history with anybody that would allow him to. But I felt like there were many a days that we just collaborated about the history of Tuckahoe, that I would share my lunch with him, and that's how the days would just go on. So, great man. He'll be missed. I just want to talk about this evening, on Saturday, October 26, between the hours of 10 and 2, DPW will be having their third annual Get Acquainted with your DPW Day. And all that simply is, is that DPW in Tuckahoe just wants to showcase a lot of what we do here in Tuckahoe. It's a public open house, it's open to the public, and it's at 15 Marble Dale Road at DPW. The Tuckahoe Environmental Sustainable Committee will be there, Tuckahoe Beautification Committee, Street Committee. I'm trying to do this without my glasses. But Love 'Em and Leave 'Em demonstrations that we're going to have, I'm giving up. We're going to do recycling do's and don'ts for those that have questions, and it's, it goes well because really, a lot of people really don't know how to, how to recycle and how to properly recycle. Furniture Share House is going to do presentation as well. We're going to display all our trucks and equipment, our booms, and children and adults can sit behind a driver's seat and toot the horn. Adults, I think, love it more than children. We're going to have trolley rides going throughout Tuckahoe, just showcasing a lot of our sustainable initiatives. Many vendors are going to be there. We're also going to collaborate with the school systems, Tuckahoe, East Chester, the middle schools, and hopefully they could also do a presentation or have a table set up at our site as well. So this is going to be a lot bigger than the past two years. We're having a lot more people involved. And we're going to have refreshments and much more, so please, everybody attend. The information will be on our local channels, and if you have any questions, please call me at DPW. If you're willing to attend even, please call me. Thank you.
10 to 6, Frank?
Frank, time?
Uh, 2, it's 10 to 2.
10 to 2, okay. On October 26, okay.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Mr. John Galuzzi, our Recreation Attendant.
Members of the board, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
About the road race yesterday, it was a fantastic day, Sunday, and one of the reasons is Renee Howell, our director, she single-handedly put together a formula to get the numbers very high. I think we had a record-high signups yesterday, didn't we?
389.
389, that's amazing. Thank you, Renee. So the proceeds from the road race this year will go to Friends of the Tuckahoe Library and the Tuckahoe Beautification Committee. A very special thank you to those merchant and business owners from our community that contributed, that helped fund the road race and also donated gift certificates to our road race raffle. Special thank you to the Raffiani Family Foundation, our road race platinum and principal sponsor, Raffiani Family Foundation. Thank you, Phil and Laura Raffiani. Also, the Seminara family, John and Mike, Westchester Tile and Marble, Assemblywoman Amy Pollan, New Row Runners, Cornell's True Value Hardware, Westchester Funeral Home, Angelina's Restaurant, Louis, thank you. Also, trustees of Myra Andino and Renee Howell contributed as well. Thank you, guys. County legislator, Damon Marr, Black Tide Transportation, New York, Roma Restaurant, Mike in Philly, thank you, at Roma, Mama Assunta, BFJ Planning, Gus Demopolis from Tuckahoe. Also, gift certificates were brought in by the Temperance Center, Twisted Bang Salon, Cowers Tuckahoe Paint Glass, always so generous, Phoenix Fitness, Broken Bow Brewery, Koala Daycare, and Plank Fitness. Gina Lee also contributed some gift certificates. Thank you for a gift certificate for Plank Fitness, a package. And to our road race vendors, we are appreciative of the vendors that came out. Christine Peters, from Senator Shelley Mayor's office, was there. Tiny Sweets by Debbie. Debbie brought a wide array of very special and delicious healthy treats. Pasquale's Deli, our new Italian deli, also brought water and fruit trays. Thank you, Pasquale. And Swirl and Joy, Chris is also very generous, he brought over quite a few cases of water. To our Tuckahoe Police EMS and DPW, Department of Public Works, we are very appreciative and thankful for the support and assistance you always give us with the, especially yesterday with the 2019 road race and all our village events. So thank you, TPD and DPW. Also very helpful were the Scouts of America, Troop 19. Renee, Renee, you coordinated the troops to come volunteer, and they did a fantastic job at the water stations. Thank you. Thank you, board. you, board.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
Thanks, John, for everything.
Yeah.
Because without him, this wouldn't happen.
And with that, we'll bring us to miscellaneous business. Our next village board meeting will be on October 7, 2019, at 7:00 PM, and that will move us along to our Board of Trustees reports, beginning with trustee Andino.
Mayor, I can't believe the summer is over. I'm hanging on to it, though. I also want to thank trustee Howell and all of the volunteers for the Tocco Challenge. It was supposed to be my first 5K, but I was away and got home too late, and I came up with every excuse not to do it, but I will next year, I promise.
But you were there.
I was there. So let me just give a few, and I hope everybody had a good summer. We're getting into the fall, and kids are going back to school. So just to echo what the chief said, just to be careful with driving, pay attention to the school buses and our children. The library events, and I better do a good job because our librarian is here, Elaine. Elaine, if I miss anything, just come right on up. Just to highlight a few things. So we have the children, some events for the children to highlight. On September 16th, they're going to be showing Mary Poppins, the movie, at 4:00. We do have kids yoga taught by Monica at 4:00 on September 17th. And there's also a book tasting club for grades 2 through 5. Snacks will be served on the 19th at 4:00. For the teens, on Saturday, September 7th and 14th, so just past, and also next Saturday, they will have math tutoring taught by our local resident, Harmi Goindi. And there will be chess classes from K through 12 on 9:19 at 4:00 PM. And we'll have some teen cooking classes, again, with chef Tina Zaccardi on September 23rd at 4:00 PM. They'll be showing a movie, Aladdin, on 9:25 at 3:30. And then for the adults, we have some chair yoga with Ann Casapini on 9:18 and 9:26. The Tocco Book Club will come together, and the book is Only Child, on September 18th at 6:30, and September 21st at 11:30 AM. We also will offer a computer class on September 19th at 11:00. And there'll be an art class on September 23rd at 6:30. There are many other, as I say every month, we have a really rich and robust program at the library. If you want more information, you can go on to tucco.com backslash library. I also would like to thank the residents who came out for our village community meeting at the VFW Post on August 21st. We had a very passionate discussion about issues that affect the community, and I really appreciate when we have that. It's okay if we don't agree on everything. It's good to hear everyone's opinions because it helps us to govern better. Some of the issues that came up related to the Tocco Public Housing Buildings, and some of the residents invited me to come and do a tour with them, which I did. There were some issues that came out of that tour, and I reached out to the executive director of the Tocco Housing Authority, Irina Madvitsky, and she was very responsive, so I want to thank her. There was a dryer that caught fire a couple of months ago, and the residents were, you know, really in need of it because there were a lot of people. There weren't enough dryers. And when I contacted her, she was very responsive, and the next day they received a new dryer. So thank you, Irina. And I also want to thank Frank DiMarco, you know, our trusted DPW superintendent. There were some issues at the park that some of the trustees and I also went down just to talk to the residents, and Frank was very, always very responsive, went down, talked to the residents, and looked at what needed to get done. So I'm really proud to live in a place where we can just call on our, you know, our staff, and people are responsive. So thank you for that. And that's it for me.
Thank you, trustee Andino. Deputy Mayor Lang.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Howey, thank you very much. First, I'd like to start with the History Committee. The new teachers from Tocco High School visited the Mini Marble Museum on August 27th. They were pleased to learn about the village and its great history, hosted by Phil and Richard Foliano. We also, again, want to thank Phil for the donation of the barber pole. We also received five volumes of, from, I'm sorry, of history from Rosa Fiore on the Tocco Senior Center. The committee continues to collect memorabilia and articles from residents. The scanning and digitalizing volumes of historic information continues. So thank you very much for that. Oh, yes. I also want to thank those of you who joined us on this year's trolley crawl. The proceeds will be helping finance the ECAP's trip to the African-American Museum in Washington, DC. So thank you so much for joining us. Every year you guys come out, and the money goes to great causes. So that's good stuff. Thank you. And lastly, I just wanted to remind everybody of the 5K, the Sixth Annual 5K, on September 29th, and that will be at 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 40 Mill Road. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And just, I just, the African-American Museum trip, Danny, do you remember what date it is? November 2nd. The buses leave at ECAP at 6:00 AM, so you can call the ECAP at 914-337-7768 if you're interested in attending.
And I think there's still room left, right?
I think so.
I think so.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Trustee Howell.
Thank you. So again, the race was a great success. I got a lot of positive feedback from the community. People said that they really thought it was a great, you know, community, very spirited event. So I would also like to thank the police, you know, and Chief Costanza, who I am texting the day before as I'm watching the numbers go up online, like, oh, my gosh, there's 300 people, oh, my gosh. And the police did an expert job taking care of the runners. So thank you for that. Also, the DPW really helping set up the course, so we couldn't have done that without them. And of course, the rec center team of John Galuzzi and John Reich helped me set everything up that day, and there's a lot to set up. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank our volunteers personally. They were the people who were taking all of the crowd who came in on registration day that we did not anticipate, and over 200 or 300 people who had signed up the day before or the weeks before. And those people were Suwadech Pachnada, Ginger and Donald Crosby, Claire Gorman, Jeff Zuckerman, Catherine Pellegrino, Mimi Sanchez, Angela Bichetti, Danny and Dylan Lang, who were there with me all day. And Danny, I even had to send Danny to get more water. We didn't have enough water. So thanks, Danny.
Very welcome.
Sophia Chiopetta, and Tracy Colabella and Scout Troop 19 for Tocco. I just want to really thank these girls because, you know, we do a lot of recognition of kids in this village, but this scout troop comes out and gives to the community on a regular basis, right? So I just want to really thank them for that and for their dedication to our community. And lastly, you know, I would also like to thank Mayor Luizzi, who I believe, I'm still checking this, but is actually the first mayor to ever run the Tocco Challenge. And certainly, the first mayor and his partner was out there on the Tocco Challenge, too. And I had--
We have to confirm that with Mayor White.
And I had a laugh last night on my Facebook page. One of my friends from the running club won a medal, and as she was, you know, we took a picture of her with Greg giving her the medal, and, you know, later she said, "I see that guy on the Bronx River Parkway all the time. I didn't know he was the mayor of Tocco." So yes, the mayor is an athlete, so we should all just recognize that. Thanks for your support, Greg.
Athlete, though? I don't know. But thank you. I'll take that.
All right. And we did have a little snafu. We didn't get to announce the adult-child winner of the best combined time in the one mile, who happened to be Andrew Hoag and his son from Bronxville. And as it turned out, they weren't there because they had to run to some other soccer game or something right after that. And I think they did it very quickly because they both ran six-minute miles. So, pretty impressive. So thanks, everyone. It was a great day, and I couldn't have done it without all that help. I wanted to update people on the planning board. I have a feeling we'll be hearing about some of the items that are up for discussion on September 17th at 7:30 here in Village Hall. The things that are on the agenda, the first one is the new apartment building at 82 Wallace Street, and I believe the planning board's done a lot of work on that, and that's about ready to be wrapped up. One issue is the removal of the smoke stack at Scarsdale Road. So that is returning. It was supposed to be on the agenda for the last planning board meeting, but was taken off, and it is back again. And something that was discussed at the community meeting is back for discussion at the planning board, and that is the potential to put a daycare in at 21 Columbus Avenue, which is the current Epstein site. There was a lot of discussion. I have to say, I think the planning board is asking all the right questions and doing a great job of that. The biggest concern was the traffic and the traffic patterns and parking. So we're having our traffic consultants look into that, and as information becomes available, I think we can publish that so people can understand it. And then following that, or actually this week, on the zoning board for September 11th, there'll be a request for a special use permit for that daycare, and then two area variances for building. So that's the update for the planning board. That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Lee.
Good evening. Mary Onehead.
Just one thing on the zoning board. The daycare may be adjourning. We're not sure yet. So if anyone plans on attending, just check the website before. We'll get that on the website to see if they're going to adjourn, but my suspicion is that they're not going to. They'll adjourn that for the zoning so they can get through the planning aspect first.
Thank you. Trustee Lee.
Good evening. Hope everyone enjoyed their summer. I want to welcome back our senior citizens. September is a busy month as they prepare for their annual bazaar, which will be held on Saturday, October 5th, at the Tocco Community Center. On September 26th, our seniors will be visiting the Historic Union Church for a tour, followed by a lunch at Half Moon Restaurant. On Saturday, September 15th, New York Presbyterian Lawrence Hospital will host the Be Well Bash on the lawn of Bronxville School from 12:00 to 3:00 PM. It will be a day of health, workshops, presentations, cooking demos, food. The Tocco Trolley will be providing round-trip transportation from Assumption Church. If you are a senior citizen and you are not a member, they meet every Tuesday and Thursday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Father Fado Hall. I absolutely adore visiting the center. There's always something going on, whether it's dancing, exercising, or playing games. Such a great group of people. I would also like to report Sunday, September 15th, is the annual Town Yard Sale at the Eastchester Library from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and there are a few spots available. If you are interested, you can email townyardsale@yahoo.com. Also, Eastchester Historical Annual Dinner Event will be held on Saturday, September 21st, at the home of the Historical Society, the Marble Schoolhouse. Guest speaker is General George Patton. This year's honoree will be Michael Fix. You can reserve your spot by emailing eastchesterhistoricalsociety.org. And of course, like I always do, go out and support our local businesses. We hate to see shops closed down because of lack of business. Three new stores have opened. On site, New York is a clothing boutique at 86 Main Street. The owner is a Tocco graduate. What is his name?
Patrick Siciliano.
Mayor knows him very well. Right next door is Premier Kitchen and Bath Design, 84 Main Street. They have a huge selection of quality kitchen and bath products. And last but not least, Pasquale's Deli, 26 Columbus Avenue, right near the Swirl, right in the Swirl and Joy Shopping Center. Coming from the Bronx, it's definitely important to have a good Italian deli nearby. And that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Lee.
Well, just like when I was a trustee, I always had to sort of repeat what everybody said before me, but I have to thank the road race committee. I was there at 7:30 in the morning, and everyone was there, fired up and ready to go, and they handled, you know, the people that came in in a very timely manner. So thank you, road race committee, as well as trustee Howell. The local businesses, as Mr. Galuzzi alluded to, they were extremely, extremely generous. Can't thank them enough. Of course, our Tocco Police Department, DPW, the Westchester County Sheriff's Department, who provided a safe environment for all the runners. And again, Troop 19 was in one of the best spots on the route of the race. They were at the turnaround point on the 5K. So by the time you got up there, you were pretty well, well, you needed something to drink, and there they were handing out bottles of water. So thank you, Troop 19. Of course, as the chief, please, it's not worth it. It's only just a matter of seconds. Do not rush in the morning. Do not try to pass those school buses. Please, think of those children. This Wednesday, I will not be here in Village Hall. I will be first attending the 9/11 ceremonies that will be held in Eastchester Town Hall, beginning at 8:45 that morning. And then I will then go down to the 9/11 Museum to take part in those ceremonies down there as well. I just ask all the residents on this coming Wednesday, just take a moment out of the day to remember those 3,000 innocent lives that were lost 18 years ago. I'd like to just update you on Exit 3 off the Bronx River Parkway. They are moving along at a steady pace. It's conceivable they could have this job finished by the end of September, but again, I'm not a construction person, but they are working there. So it's better than it was months ago, so. And also, along those same lines, I know the village was just recently contacted by Con Ed to let us know they plan on replacing the 120-year-old gas main that runs from Columbus Avenue to Marble Dale Road on Main Street. I know David and I believe Frank is going to be setting up a meeting with Con Ed and the county to discuss this issue further. And the ultimate goal here is if this does occur, it's going to work in our favor. The downside of that is that Main Street may not be resurfaced this year, but the repaving cost will then be borne by Con Ed and not the county, therefore freeing up those monies for possible other improvements on the Main Street corridor. As we get more information, we will be sure to pass that on to our residents. And as we spoke about earlier, I again apologize for the elevator being out of service. I know it's really put a strain on so many people, but we're working on it, and it will be done. I also would like to mention the Gold Star Mothers Memorial will be held on Sunday, September 29th, at 10:00 AM at the memorial that's located in Eastchester on Route 22. So again, the Gold Star Mothers Memorial will be held on Sunday, September 29th, at 10:00 AM at the memorial located in Eastchester. And the Gold Star Mothers, the burden that they have to carry, the least that we can do is come out that day in support of the Gold Star Mothers. And what I'd like to do at this point in time is to ask anyone in the audience, if you'd like to address the board on any subject.
Actually, Greg, can I, there's one thing, or Mayor Luizzi. I forgot. At our last working meeting, we, the issue of moving the elections, our village elections, to November was brought forward. And so the main reason to do that is really to allow more people to be able to vote. And there are two articles, which I think we can probably put on the website, which deal with cases of local towns that did the same thing, and how much more, you know, how many more people it got out to vote. So we would love to hear everyone's views on that, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board? Yes, Mr. Laurie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Board members. At your VFW meeting in-- At your VFW meeting in August, I had mentioned to you that it is very good possibility that we can name part of Maynard Street Al Carapello Way, just his four walls are up on his house before the good Lord takes this man, and I think it would be an honor. And you had asked me to get some information on him, so I got all the information on it, and he's got it on here. He wrote a little note. He said, "It would be an honor, and I thank you for it if you do do this." So, I think whenever you could get the ball rolling, move it on. Hopefully, we could get it done before the end of the year. The man is not in perfect health to come out in cold weather, you know? We've still got some nice weather here, so I will give this to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Laurie. I will make copies and distribute this to the board as well.
Just for information for people who don't know, Mr. Carapella, he's in, he was an All-American in nineteen fifty-two. He's been a lifelong resident of this town, born and raised here. He was also an N. P. on the Nuremberg Tribunals during the war, so he was an educator in Mount Vernon Schools. And he's been around a long time, as well as his family also. He's been in this town, I guess they're probably the salt of this little community that we love so much. So, it will be a great honor if this man sees this before the good Lord takes him. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, Claire. Ms. Claire Gorman.
Hi, everyone. Claire Gorman, twenty-four Bronx Street, Tuckahoe. First of all, I got the pleasure of interviewing Mr. Carapella for the anniversary of East Chester for the hundredth. We did the chapter on sports and recreation, and he's a fascinating man. He really has some wonderful history. And we've been talking a lot about history here tonight, from Bob D'Agostino to Phil Pepe and all the great donations he's made to the village. And I want to keep that in mind and encourage people to come to the planning board and support maintaining that smokestack, because that's an important part of our history. It's a past, to our industrial past, which is what we are, this is why we're here. We're here because of that industrial past. And we have people, my relatives, other people's relatives, who have worked for Hodgman Rubber, who worked for Burroughs Welcome, who worked for U. S. V. Revlon. There's so much in that history, and you can see that from all over the village. It is a testament to our history. And the planning board in nineteen ninety-nine, when this was discussed, had the foresight to recognize that importance by requiring the owner of that property to maintain that smokestack. And I hope our planning board does not go back on that nineteen ninety-nine planning board's decision. They were so smart to do that. So, please come to the meeting, and let's make sure that doesn't leave us. Thanks.
Thank you, Claire. Yes.
I also support Claire, but a lot of people don't know, there was two smokestacks there. Back in the sixties, when Burroughs Welcome was there, they had a big explosion, and two men got killed, and one of those smokestacks came tumbling down. And they were connected. You could see the firebox wall is blocked up. They were connected, both of them. So, that's a little history. I don't know if Claire knew that, but there was another smokestack that, like I said, went down on the explosion that time. And that was, I can remember, it was on a weekday. Fire trucks were coming over from all over the place when that thing fell down.
Does anyone else would like to address the board on any item? You know, this young man, Mr. Tom Giordano. Good evening.
Tom, I'd be happy to have you. Honorable trustees and mayor, I really came tonight for a couple of reasons. One was, and first and foremost, I wanted to offer my support and gratitude to this board for especially hearing of all these great community-building activities that all of you and your function heads are engaged in. I think it's terrific to hear concern for those who are less fortunate than we, for our merchants, for our terrific job on our road race. Trustee Howell, to have three hundred, almost four hundred people there. These are all terrific things that help to increase our experience, our short time on this earth, and make it valuable. And so, I wanted to thank and express my gratitude to this administration for all that it's doing in connection with those efforts. Even the idea of banning electronic cigarettes, I know we say it's a no-brainer, but I remember when Mayor Bloomberg had originally put some manner and time restrictions on the use of cigarettes in public places in the city, and I thought of what, how that was a restraint on people's freedoms. But the truth of the matter is that it really set an example that's, you know, ended up changing the course of history and saving, I think, millions of lives. So, it's good to get ahead of it, and it's good that leaders are making decisions based on, you know, these early signs to, especially when our children are involved, to get ahead of these things. So, I commend you on that as well. Finally, I just wanted to hear trustee Howell's comment on term limits, and I think certainly something, or changing election cycles. And I think there's, I've been thinking about the several elections that I was involved with, and trudging through the snow in the winter is not easy, March. And there, I think there are other justifications for it as well. There certainly is perhaps more popular support during those times, that time of, you know, during a time of year where there's a general election. I would caution in the decision to also consider that we try not to be swept up in the partisan aspects of politics, right? And you can see that with this board working together, that the decisions are made also in consideration of the, really, the local issues that we try to focus on during that difficult time that we trudge through the snow, and the fact that we only have to do it for a couple of months, right? We have maybe forty-five to sixty days, as opposed to, in my mind, perhaps with a November election, you may need to consider something that may be a lot more protracted. So, I'm not coming out one way or the other on this, but I just wanted to give my thoughts on that as well. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Tom. Greatly appreciate it.
And the articles that I mentioned, Tom, come from law journals also that look at these. And I think it's compelling to look at the data of what's happened in communities that have, especially on that issue of, you know, the potential for losing local issues in the larger state and federal issues. But, so, in these communities that are similar to ours, that hasn't seemed to happen. So, but I think it's worth reading these articles, so I think we should get them up on the website.
That's a great idea, and educate, educate our constituents is always the best policy. Yeah, thanks. All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Tom. Mayor White, yes.
I know, Mayor, you've been very involved with the memorial downtown with the nine eleven. There was an excellent program on the other night by National Geographic, a two-hour program that went through the entire nine eleven destruction down there, and the individual pilots and so on. The reason why I bring it up, of the nine people from the community, community being the town of East Chester, that died, four of them were from Tuckahoe. One of them was a fire marshal who did the forensics on the destruction earlier in the nineties, and it almost took down the hotel.
Right.
He did the forensics, and he stated that they will be back. He was correct. And there's a book out that I'd like to recommend to everybody, it's called A Thousand Years for Revenge. I don't know whether our Tuckahoe library still has it, but it's an excellent book. It tells the mistakes that were made that should never have happened. So, for what it's worth, I just wanted to bring it out to you.
Thank you.
The person in Tuckahoe who was the fire marshal that died is Ron Booker.
Ronald Booker, yes.
His family is still here in town.
And what's interesting, just a side note about fire marshal Booker is, he was one of two people that achieved the impact zone in the South Tower, but unfortunately, because he was not part of the radio transmissions, the fire battalion chief that he was with, Oriole Palmer, is also, is always the one that's mentioned in that dialogue. And of course, you know, I always mention Fire Marshal Booker as the second person that was with Oriole Palmer at the impact zone in the South Tower. But yes, thank you. Anyone else would like to address the board? Okay, before I adjourn the meeting, I would just like to ask everyone to stand for a moment of silence in honor of former mayor Rob D'Agostino. And with that being no further business, I don't have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So, moved.
Good night, Tuckahoe. We'll see you in October.